The regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for the township of Belville for December 6, 2018 will now come to order. Clerk call the roll.
Bennett. Caruso.
Yes, here.
Giannata.
Here.
Casa. Lopez. Lozawa. Sheldon.
Here.
Valado.
Yeah.
Del Gersia.
Here. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our clerk's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the municipal with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
The meeting has never been according to the Sunshine Law.
Okay. The minutes. Everybody looking at the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any problem with the minutes?
Yeah.
Make the notice that Mr. Lopez has just entered the room and is coming up to the dais. So, anyone have any problems with the minutes?
No.
Mr. Lopez, you have any problems with the minutes?
I read through them. I'm fine.
Oh, you're good, okay. Motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve by Mr. Valado, seconded by Mr. Caruso.
He has him approved.
Clerk call the roll.
Bennett. Caruso.
Yes.
Giannata.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Gersia.
Yes. Okay. Before we forget this, has everybody seen the list that's been made for the new coming year?
Yes.
Anybody have a problem with any of the dates?
We never know. It's just a half. So, there's no problem but at all. The only date that is not going to be on the first Thursday of the month is going to be July, because the first Thursday of the month is July 4th, and we're going to have our meeting on Wednesday, the 10th. You can't have it on Thursday because that's the zoning board meeting. Okay, so, okay, that's the only date that's not going to be on the first Thursday of the month.
So, can I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Motion to accept by Mr. Caruso of the Council for 219, seconded by Mr. Valado. Clerk call the roll.
Bennett. Yes. Caruso.
Yes.
Giannata.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Gersia.
Yes. Okay. Motion, applications for adjournment, I had a bunch of them here. Okay. Let's see the agenda. A&amp;T Solutions. Oh, no, that's the case right here. Number two on the agenda, ZB 2018-04, 548-568 Franklin Avenue Sound Development LLC. This is dated November 30th. Dear Gina, by way of this correspondence, I am requesting an adjournment of the above matter, which is currently scheduled for zoning board on December 6, 2018. I respectfully ask the case to be carried to the next meeting, January 3, 2019. I hereby waive any further notice required. Signed Marina C. Perna.
Did we have a discussion about that?
About this?
Yeah, last night.
No. We had a discussion about the next one.
Yeah.
Well, this is because they're pending the sale, which they'll, what's going to happen is, from what I understand, today was the last day for people to bid, the journey members to bid for the property that was town property in the back, which they want to add to this application. They'll know tomorrow morning if they were the only bidder, and then it's up to the council to approve the sale or not. And then if that's added in, then I understand that new notices have to be sent, and the case will be amended.
Okay.
Okay? All right, now, any persons in the audience who are interested in this case, 548-568 Franklin Avenue, there'll be no further notices either in the mail, well, actually, there may be new notices in the mail and in the newspaper because of the, there might be a change to the area involved. Now, the next case, which gets even more interesting, this is the one, that is number three, ZB 2017-18, and that is JMSO LLC, also known as Parts Authority, 3337 Rutgers Street, Block 9402, lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, dated November 21st. Ms. Chicorelli, I am writing to... Who? Chicorelli.
You were telling?
Yes. Well, you never know. I am writing to respectfully request a further adjournment with regard to the above captioned matter. We are requesting that the application for JMSO LLC presently scheduled to be heard at December 6, 2018, meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment, be adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on January 3, 2019. This adjournment request is being made due to the need to provide a new legal notice via certified mailing to property owners with the 200 feet of the subject property and also via publication. Unfortunately, although we received and submitted the revised application materials earlier today due to the Thanksgiving holiday, the publication deadline for the North Star Ledger Newspaper was expedited, and the required legal notice could not be published in a timely manner. I apologize for any inconvenience caused as a result of this further delay. In consideration of this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all equitable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment requested, which makes no sense since there's new notice being sent, so the time starts all over again. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in connection with this request. Should you need any further, please do not hesitate to call. Yours truly, Michael J. Palomari Esquire. And I probably destroyed his name, too. But anyway.
Pirmali.
Pirmali. But I don't know why you put about suspending the...
Well, we didn't get into a legal discussion. There would be some question as to whether or not you had a hearing case.
Well, if we have new notice, it starts all over again.
Maybe.
Oh, he wants to get tough tonight.
I don't want to get tough. I made it.
All right. The last case.
I'd like to give him a...
Well, the problem obviously was...
This is like the ninth, I don't know how many...
This is from February.
I'm just trying to...
The problem was the notice, we were ready to go, and because of the holiday, they didn't publish. Never let us know they had to be like another week in advance.
But that has nothing to...
As for both of these cases.
That has nothing to do with waiving the time concerns.
No, I'm not talking about that.
At this point, it's the delay.
My question was, it's been adjourned like seven days.
But at least we got new plans.
Everything's ready now.
So, let's...
Mr. Harris, did you do the report yet?
Everything's ready.
Out of the plans?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so they'll be given to us next month in our package. We didn't want to make the package too fat this month. We're going to hear the case anyway. Okay. The last case of what?
What we're going to do, to January 3?
Yes, is adjourned to January 3, and there's new notice and new publications.
For me, you know, I'm not getting into legal law when they add to or not.
But they did it.
When I finish my sentence, they need response. My point is that if they come up here next month and say, you know, we need an adjournment, and I'm not going to need a minute of that time.
I understand.
That's my point. That's all.
I understand. You understand, Mr. Gassion, you understand?
I already have a problem with one of my witnesses, and I've replaced him. Ouch.
But we're not hearing the case tonight.
No, go ahead, that's...
He can't make it for that next hearing date, and we found another witness.
Okay. Whatever you need to do, you'll do.
I'm doing it.
That's all.
See, he's being real nice. Okay. The last case on the agenda, ZB 2018-11. I think we only have a case addition. That is dated December 3, it's 1721 Brook Street, All City Restoration Incorporated. That's Block 105, lots 8 and 9. Mrs. Chicorelli, I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above captioned matter. We are requesting that the application for All City Restoration Incorporated presently scheduled to be heard at the December 6, 2018, meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on January 3. This adjournment request is being made due to the fact that the required legal notice was not published in a timely manner as due to the Thanksgiving holiday. The publication deadline for the Belville Times Newspaper was expedited without our having been notified of the change. I apologize for any inconvenience caused as a result of this delay. In consideration for this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment requested. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in connection with this matter. Should you need further, anything further, please do not hesitate to call me, of course. It's Michael J...
I'll let you say it.
Pirmali.
Pirmali. Okay. It's the same thing to be jolly, we might as well have some fun. Okay. So, that's the end of the adjournments.
Wait, wait, we've got to carry that to...
We're carrying that to the third, but you've got to remember something. They're sending the note, now, the notice was sent saying it's for today, is that what it was, Mr. Gassion?
Yes.
Okay. So, anyone in the audience, the notices for both ZB 2018-04 and, no, not 04, what was the one there? Oh, Rutgers. ZB 2017-18 and ZB 2018-11, there will be no further notices. The notices that said it was supposed to be tonight, everything's carried over to next month. You should have no further notices in the newspaper or by mail. Okay? I think that satisfies that.
What's wrong with that last one?
What last one?
Brooke.
What's wrong with Brooke?
They owe the town $8,000.
No, they don't. No, they don't. No, they don't. Because everybody told me about it, I researched it, the taxes were paid on Friday afternoon late, and they were taken off the sale list Monday morning. Okay? Okay? And I got that directly from the head of that department, Tax Collector's office. Okay, now, now, let's go to the case at hand, so we can finally get something done. Case at hand is ZB 2018-08, ATN Solutions LLC, 114 Cortlandt Street. Mr. Gassion is the attorney of record, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Should I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council members, Robert Gassion, the former Gassion, Block 0524 Union Avenue in Belville. This case commenced on October 4. The first person we heard from was the applicant owner, Yacosta Borgos. Following Ms. Borgos, we heard from the architect, Mr. Cha. During the course of Mr. Cha's testimony, there were some questions he was unable to answer, and after a brief recess, I asked that the case be adjourned to this evening. Tonight, I will recall Mr. Cha to review some of his testimony and to discuss some changes to the plan. Following Mr. Cha will be the planner, George Williams. He will review the planning reasons why he thinks this application should be approved. He will review the C1 and C2 criteria and discuss the negative criteria. At the conclusion of his testimony, I think it will be clear that the application should be approved, and that it's extremely unlikely that anyone would spend the necessary funds to erect a one-family home at this location. I recall Mr. Cha.
And Mr. Gassion, when you were here in October, this application was to demolish the existing vacant home, one family and construct a two-family, and there were several dimensional variances involved, and that's where we are now.
It remains the same, except there's been some changes to plan, which will be reviewed by the architect, and he'll mention a couple of other changes in addition to what's been submitted. Mr. Cha.
Mr. Cha, first of all, you are still under oath from the October meeting. Could you, for the record, state your name and spell both your first and last name again?
Yes, last name is C-H-I, first name is J-U-N-G-K-E-U-N-G.
And you're an architect, and your license is still in your standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Cha, have you been to the site since the last hearing?
Yes, I have. And at the last meeting, there was a question about why isn't the building, we had and tried to reuse the building. And I went to the site, and I took some photographs.
All right, so what you're testifying to is why, you're going to talk about the condition of that structure, is that correct, Mr. Cha?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we, we mark 8-2. Why don't we mark this?
A series of five photographs of the interior building?
Right, and if you could tell me, Mr. Cha, who took these and approximately when?
I took it, that was a day before yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Now, then we 8-2.
Mark it as 8-2, man. And would you explain to the board what those photographs depict?
I took these pictures in the basement because I wanted to see whether the foundation was stable or not, and here are some pictures of the existing basement right now. Apparently, the masonry or brick foundation is resting on a rubble. And here, as you can see in certain areas, the rubbles are actually falling apart. And I don't see any concrete footing where normal construction would be. And then another thing I'd like to point out to you, these are the existing beams that they have. Now, if you look at these pictures here, insects been eating away at these beams quite a bit. So, I, you know, by looking at this, these conditions, I would say that it's not stable, it's not sound, the existing structure to be used.
Mr. Cha, is there also actually a hole somewhere in the building?
There is a hole, and that's here in this picture, although it's, because this photograph it doesn't show, but yes, there is an open, the outside.
Mark it, please.
We did hear it.
Can you mark it?
Based on these conditions, should the building be condemned at this point? Is that that safe for human condition?
I would say so. I would think so.
Well, it's vacant, so no one's going to be living there.
But, you know, when you see that kind of, you know, insects eating away at the structure, it's very hard to tell what else it's been eating away, you know, but as you can see on the photograph, they did a pretty good job, and that doesn't look sound at all.
Mr. Cha, in your professional opinion, as an architect, would you say that it would be difficult to impossible to re-build, take the existing structure?
I would, I would say yes. Because of the fact that you need to replace just about everything, you know, and as I showed you on the foundation, you would have to understand those foundations, which would be, you know, possibly capable of...
How did you get into the basement, by the way?
Your client owns the property.
How are you at that point? I'm talking about the door.
Front door.
So, you didn't go through the hole that you're talking about?
No.
Where does the hole lead to?
The back of it, the hole leads to the basement. There's one hole that leads to basement, and also there's another hole that's opened up on the side of the building in the back. It's open to the first floor.
This is a hole in the foundation?
Yes.
From what I saw. The hole in the foundation, if you go through it, where do you end up?
You go through it, you end up in the basement.
I'm talking about from inside the basement. You go through the hole, you're in the basement.
You go outside.
You go outside where?
Backyard.
Backyard, okay, thank you.
Did you, subsequent to the last hearing, make some changes to the plan?
Yes, there was a question about, you know, first level being possibly, you know, changed to an apartment. So, two, couple of things, the changes that I had made is that maybe one parage and so two parages, a pendant, pendant situation, and also left the... And we took out the bathtub, and for the rest, there is still a laundry room, there's the owner's storage and the equity room, and rest of the space is for the parages, two parages.
Now, Mr. Cha, subsequent to the plan that was submitted, do you have a revised plan, takes out the half bath and takes out the rear door?
Yes, if the board requires, yes, there is another plan that I brought with me with the removal of the bathroom if the board wishes that the bathroom is not allowed in the first floor.
And you have sufficient sets of those plans?
Yes.
And we'd like to officially amend the application to reflect that there will be no half bath and no rear exit to the building. These plans are being submitted. There's only two minor changes.
No, no, we have, we have...
No, 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 no.
No, there's two additional changes.
More changes?
Today? Today.
Well, what I think we should do is mark these as 8-3. Obviously, we have seen these, and Tom has...
There's only two changes on there, very simple to review.
Taking the bathroom out and...
And the rear door.
Lower floor in the rear door.
Yes.
In the basement area, the rear door is eliminated, and the half bath is eliminated. That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Cha, do you also do a rendering of the proposed structure and how it fits with the adjacent properties?
Yes.
Can you please mark that as where we at 8-4?
Excuse me, the rear door in the basement?
Is eliminated.
Where did that go?
It's, it's, it's...
It went to the backyard. It was an exit to the rear yard.
Okay, so right now, there would be one exit front of the house.
Mr. Cha?
Sorry.
If I'm in the basement, the exit, my exit out is in the front. That's it. Okay.
Mr. Cha, would you start by reviewing the drawing reflecting the current situation of the property? I think you have two drawings that show the current.
Yes.
I'm sorry. We have just the, we don't have the entire pictures of the entire exhibit, but we have of the new. Just the top portion of the exhibit we have, we're giving out.
Do you mark that a four?
Yes.
That would be four, that would be five.
Here's the existing picture of the front of the property. This is the sub-property in the middle, and the either, two family homes that's on either side of the premises.
And, Mr. Cha, although it is not as clear in this picture, is it correct that this old one family is very close to the street line as compared to the other two properties, and you have a picture that reflects that?
Correct. Here's a bird's eye view of the premises of both houses on either side, and this is the existing house, which is quite close to the...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Aren't the two structures that are flanking the property in question, aren't they newer properties?
These are newer properties.
That's what I'm saying. So, that's why they're further back.
I don't see what relevance that has, but no...
No, you're the one who brought up that that one's closer to the sidewalk, because the new properties complied with the zoning law, and that's why they're further back.
But the old one doesn't.
Well, the old one is before the zoning law required it, probably.
Correct. And, Mr. Cha, would you continue with your explanation of the existing circumstances?
Yes, we're just pointing out the fact that the existing house is lot closer to the front yard line, and that the, in reality, well, if you look at the streetscape, actually, the proposed plan actually were pushing this building further back so that it's somewhat in line with the buildings on either side, which also would comply with the size required for the parking on the driveway.
Mr. Cha, would you now review the rendering showing the proposed new structure in place of the existing one?
Yes, here's the, what the building looks like, what we're proposing, and it's actually set back a little bit further than the existing houses on either side, so that we can comply with the requirement for parking space in the driveway. And actually, as you can see, what you see before and what you see now, it does make a cleaner looking street front, and I think it should be an asset to the value of the properties and that.
Does this show in the new rendering? Question? I'm sorry.
I'm just sorry, I want to make sure I'm speaking the same language. He says, so the parking can comply for a one-family or a two-family?
Two-family.
So, he's going to have four spots?
Yes. Three on one side, one on the other. If you look at the plan, you'll see two interior garage spaces.
Oh, two, two in tandem.
Two interior garage spaces.
They'll be tandem.
Tandem, triple tandem.
Triple tandem.
Yeah, regardless of the garage and toilet.
Excuse me. Three in a row in a garage.
Two inside.
Two in a row.
One behind.
Three, he said, inside.
Two inside.
No, he's saying three.
In a row. Three in a row, two inside.
Three, two inside the garage, one in front of the garage door, then, for three, and then one to the left.
Adjacent, right.
Okay, thank you.
Now, would you say that this rendering showing the proposed new two-family is aesthetically more pleasing than the existing circumstances?
I believe so, yes. And I hope the board feel the same way.
And would you say that this proposed home fits in better with the two adjacent properties than the existing structure?
As you can see with this existing structure, with the gable roof going this way, whereas the, you know, with this, the new structure here, it kind of matches the other two.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Any other questions for members of the board?
I have a couple. You get two properties that flank the applicant's property, those are much larger lots, aren't they? They're much wider?
Yes.
Forty or so feet across, where your lot's just 25.
I think those questions might be better asked of the planner. This is the architect who drew the plan.
Say it for the planner, then.
And even testify as to the size of those properties.
Okay, say it for the planner, then.
Mr. Caruso, I mean, Mr. Valado.
You removed the door in the backyard, right? Is that windows back there now? Is that what it is?
Yes.
You have windows going into storage room?
Yes.
I just, I don't, I don't understand the purpose of windows going in.
Well, you're having kind of lights on. I'm just sorry.
Okay, turn the lights on.
Natural light.
You have two windows going in storage. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cha, are there any issues, are there any issues with the proposed house on the sides? It looks to be windows. Any issues with proximity to the other homes in terms of fire?
That will be addressed.
We can't know that when it comes into question.
Yes, the building department issue.
There's not construction jobs here.
I go back to Mr. Valado. Mr. Valado, if you think they're still trying to do something with that basement that's illegal, and you think the windows are concerned, my client doesn't care. You can close up the window.
Again, I don't like to make assumptions, but I ask, I'd like to get into his head and what his rationale was for two windows. As you know, I've seen a lot of structure in the basement. I don't see full-size windows in a basement, that, to me, so...
Again?
Just trying to understand.
If that is a concern of yours, we can take it out.
Is it basement or grade level?
It's grade level.
Grade level.
It's grade level, but it's full-size windows. I don't... I, I don't, I'm just trying to understand what his thinking was for the purpose.
Should the board see fit to approve this application and say that window has to be removed?
Two windows, right? There are two windows there?
We have no problem.
Okay. I was asking a question. All right, thank you.
By, by eliminating the back door on the ground level, is that going to create any safety problems because you don't have the secondary means of...
Mike, when he comes in for building permits, when he has construction joints, if these aren't construction joints, we'll have to figure it all out to see. He might need that second exit.
He may need it.
If you guys approve it. So, we don't know, because these aren't construction joints. I gotta figure out the ratings and stuff like that.
I also had a question about the, the parking. It looks like, um, with the current layout, you're, you're basically facilitating front yard parking. And I thought our, our zoning prevents front yard parking. You can't have parking stalls in, in front of a house. If I'm wrong about that, Mr. DiLorenzo, can...
As long as it's in front of the garage.
In front of, but yeah, here's one, one spot is in front of the front door.
Front door.
And I don't think that's permitted, right, by code?
No.
We're happy to seek a variance in order to comply with the parking requirement if you think that's necessary.
It's parking in the front yard.
Parking in the front yard, there's a garage there, is it decent? How wide is it, the driveway now?
It's 18.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have to grant him a waiver then.
So it stands, you really only have three parking spots at this point. Three tandem, two inside the garage, and one out, outside.
No, the plan has four parking spaces. Plan has four parking spaces. We need a variance for the fourth. Yeah, a waiver for the fourth.
What would require for that fourth spot? I also had a question about the pervious and impervious coverage, but I don't know if, if I should say that for the planner or the architect.
He would better, the planner would be better prepared to answer that, but I think Mr. DiLorenzo obviously could answer it also better than my, my architect.
Yeah, Tommy, Tommy has that too.
I'm just having some, some difficulty reconciling the calculations for the, the amount of impervious coverage. From what I, what I see of this plan, you've got a little patch of land in the back, which is just about 25 by 25, or 600, 25, 625 square feet. Then you've got the two little strips along the side, so as, might be the calculation, you have a little over 1,000 square feet of pervious coverage. The lot size is just under 25, so your impervious coverage, according to my calculation, you're 58.7% impervious and only 41.3% pervious. But that...
I don't, I don't think they need impervious for just that.
There's, there's no requirement.
Only for the building coverage.
Yeah.
All right. Because the table that was provided with the, uh, with Mr. DiLorenzo's thing said that there was only...
Well, that was pretty RC zone, what he was doing for a two-family. Two-family does need it, but two-family, no, you gotta go to the standard for two-family.
Any members of the board have a question? Public witness based upon testimony? Any members of the public have a question based upon testimony? Yes, Mr. Mafucci. Come up, please.
I think it was finally answered. I've had a question all along.
Name an address, please.
Victor Mafucci, 61 Continental Avenue, Delaware. Uh, when you're referring to basement, you're talking ground level or sub-ground?
Uh, ground, grade level.
Grade level. Okay, that was it.
Now, that's a good question. So foundation, I asked that question last month, and you didn't answer it. Now, what we're saying is that the foundation is above ground or below ground?
Below ground.
It is below ground. Okay. So technically, this, this foundation wouldn't be used in the new house, because on the new house, you're saying it's gonna be on the slab, correct?
Uh, the new house will be on the slab, right.
It's still have foundation, though.
Yeah.
You'll have foundation. Yeah, should, but, but no basement.
No basement.
No basement.
Exactly. Ground level would be technically like the basement. Okay. Any other questions by members of the public of this witness based upon testimony given? None. Mr. Gassion, you may call your next witness. Mr. Williams? Raise your right hand, please, Mr. Williams, with regard to this application. Do you swear your testimony shall be the truth?
I most certainly do.
Could you state your name, spare your last name, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is George Whittle Williams. Williams spelled in S.W.I.L.L.I.A.M.S.
You've qualified here on previous applications as, as a planner. Uh, we've accepted your, your credentials. Are they still? Are your licenses still in effect?
They all are.
Okay, is that why you're calling him, obviously, as a land use planner?
I am absolutely calling him as a planner. If the board wants to accept him without me review, or without him reviewing his qualifications, that's fine with me. You want him to review them, he will.
Do we need him for the record or not?
No.
Then, okay, no problem.
So then, Mr. Williams is accepted as an expert in the field of planning?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, would you tell the board what you did in order to prepare, or what you reviewed in order to prepare for your testimony you're going to give tonight for this case?
Certainly, and you've probably heard me say this before, we approach this application the same way we approach every land use application, beginning with a review of your local land use documents, in this case, your master plan, your zoning ordinance, uh, and of course, the site plan and application are before you this evening. I've been to the site several times, uh, now, as this matter has been carried, but I also looked at some of the literature and case law supporting the release that we're gonna be seeking, uh, this evening.
And would you give us a project overview with regard to proposed demolition and the proposed construction of a new two-family?
Certainly. Uh, you've already heard from Mr. Cha, the project architect, and our client, the applicant, um, about the intent and purposes of this application, so you know that the intent is to demolish the existing substandard single-family structure on this site and to replace it with new construction for a two-family residential, uh, structure. The lot, as you know, is an undersized lot. Uh, it's, uh, approximately 2,484 square feet, and this board knows, and it's in your staff reports, the required minimum lot area for this district is 5,000 square feet. So you see that this is clearly a undersized lot, and I would argue further, an isolated undersized lot. I'll talk more about that in a bit. The lot width is also less than required, uh, width for this district. 50 feet is required. We have 25 feet. Again, all that's important in the context of the undersized lot, um, discussion for these proofs. In terms of the area, and I'll have a couple of exhibits. This board knows the area as well as, if not better than I. Cortlandt Street has a mix or hodgepodge of land uses in the immediate vicinity, including two, some three, and commercial land uses. There's also a municipal lot, a parking lot directly across the street from our property. There are several, only two reliefs, uh, unless we add the parking waiver being required. So the use is permitted, the two-family home is permitted in this zone district. But we, and there are the pre-existing non-conforming, as I just mentioned, the, the lot size and lot width.
Could you hold on a minute?
Yep.
Can you find out what's going on here?
I'm reading something.
Well, if, if something that's...
You haven't even testified to our...
I haven't even testified. I read this.
You want me to read it?
Oh, well.
That relieves, that leaves us with the two, um, relief proceedings. One is the minimum side yard setback, uh, five foot each, 14 foot total is required. Currently, we have one foot each, 3.7 feet, and the proposed would be three foot each, six foot, uh, for the development. So as you can see, we're actually improving this slightly over the current conditions. And on the survey or drawing that Mr. Cha presented, if you look at the outline, you can actually see the superposition of the new development on the existing development. You see how, um, the conditions are improved slightly. Nothing significant, but they are moving closer towards compliance. Maximum lot coverage, and this came up earlier, I think, in the context of the impervious coverage, but maximum lot coverage required is 30%. Currently, we're at 24.9%, and what's proposed is 38.8%, and so we do need relief for that. Parking, we now have satisfied on-site, meaning we are required to have four parking spaces on-site. We have done that, but we understand that we may need to require, request rather, a waiver because of the, uh, site plan design to make that accommodation possible. That is, we have two in the garage, one directly outside of the garage, and the third, fourth, excuse me, is, um, kind of catty corner on the site. So that raised the issue of the front yard parking. And we're, we're more than willing to, uh, are able to seek a waiver for that. Um, and I'll talk about the trade-offs, uh, in a second.
General, you want to review the area description?
Yes. I have a couple of exhibits. They're low-tech exhibits, um, hopefully that give further context to the testimony. Again, we're really seeking to release, um, but it's gonna, I think, help underscore the land development pattern in the area. Someone asked earlier about the other lot sizes, and while I don't have the exact dimensions, these, um, exhibits may give you a better idea.
A6?
A5.
A5, sorry. A6. She made a, a part of the rendering A5, the one that was handed in the paper version. So we're now at A6.
A6 is just a...
Do you want to show, Mr. Ragel, what you had as, no, uh, show him what you had as A5? That's what she had, is A5.
Okay.
And here's the various copies of A6.
A6 is the area?
It's an aerial photograph provided by Google Earth Imagery and with an overlay by my office.
Also, we're submitting A7, and would you explain to the board what A7 is?
Certainly. Given the conversation at the last hearing, we, um, drafted another exhibit. It's another aerial image, this time with an overlay that shows, uh, our field observations of the land uses in the immediate vicinity.
And, Mr. Williams, do you also have A8?
One last exhibit I do. This is a simple, uh, photo survey of the site and the surrounding area. And I was responsible for the pictures. I and my staff were responsible for the pictures.
A8. A8, I'm sorry.
A8.
A series of photographs of the properties surrounding.
Of the, A, um, A6. I don't. In fact, I didn't have one for myself.
So this is the property to the right, am I correct?
If I may. An A6. What are you trying to show me?
Glad you asked. Um, a couple of points. First of all, A6 is obviously dated, uh, back in 2016. The intent of A6 was really just to show our property in the context of the surrounding area. So our property is defined by the dash red lines. If you look to the right of our property, if you're facing the property, you see the vacant lot. Clearly, it's not vacant anymore.
No, it's ours.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so when we initially approached this, our intent was just to show the property in the context of the surrounding area. We weren't thinking about, weren't thinking as much about lot sizes as the commissioner asked in the surrounding area. We saw this as a permitted use. We knew, um...
What's a permitted use?
The two-family.
You saw it as a permitted use?
No, I'm saying, we know that the proposed development is a permitted use in this district.
Go ahead.
So we didn't think by doing the zoning overlays, we didn't think that was as important, but as we heard the board discussion, that's why we ended up doing A7, which I think is more...
So, when you say permitted use, you mean permitted use providing, providing you have...
Correct, I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, but it is a permitted, two-family, it's a permitted use in the zone.
I said permitted if you have all the requirements.
No, it's a permitted use. It's a permitted use. You need variances, both variances having to do with it. You don't take away the permitted use aspect by having, by requiring both variances.
But the point is, you, it's not, if you can't build a two without, um, variances, it's, it's a...
I think we're having a difference of opinion on words.
I'm sure.
If you're in a multi-family zone, if you need variances, it's still a multi-family zone. If you're in a two-family zone, if you need variances, it's still two-family zone, and therefore, two families are permitted or multi-families are permitted.
Okay, Bob.
You need variances because of bulk issues. Doesn't change what's permitted, well. Are you getting upset, but you shouldn't be getting upset. It's permitted.
I'm not getting upset. I'm, I'm saying to you, okay. I gave it to you what you wanted to hear.
The only other thing I would add to, um, A6 is that it also indicates the bus stops in the area in a narrative, but they're not shown, uh, on this picture, but, um, it's the, uh... There's three bus stops in the immediate...
I have a question. A7.
Yes.
The house that you showed us in A6 that was a, an empty lot?
Yes.
I knocked on their door, and they said they were a two-family house. You got them as a multi-family.
Yes, I'll explain that in a second.
Oh, okay.
Can I go to A7 first? Because I think what you just referred to is A8, if I remember correctly.
No, A7, sir. A7 is the, uh, is this here.
Oh, correct, right. And the pictures are on A8.
Yes.
Okay. So, to Mr. Vlano's point about the value added of A6, again, we thought another aerial view with greater overlays or labeling might be more instructive, so we created A7. To piggyback on the discussion between counsel and Mr. Com, Commissioner Vlano, the code list permitted accessory, conditional, and sometimes prohibited usage. And so what we wanted to do is look at the na, the character of the land development pattern on this street. And what we found, whoa, I'm sorry, let me back up for a second. We were, we were not successful in pulling all of the municipal records, so what we opted to do was to go out and do a field observation, and this is not scientific, so I just want to proffer that immediately to your point, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what we did is we counted doorbells. We went old school, the way I was trained in graduate school. We counted doorbells, mailboxes, and meters. So to the best of our knowledge, this is the way, um, the land development pattern...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why don't you just go to the tax assessor's office and have all the records pulled?
We actually did file an OPR, but for whatever reasons, that did not bear fruit. We had a conversation with staff later on. We decided we would just go out and do the...
Well, I do it all the time, and I never have a problem. But I could tell you, I knocked on that door.
Right.
Because I was confused what it was.
So were we.
And they actually told me they were a two-family.
Yeah, when you look at the, at some of the meters and doorbells, it would appear that it's a three-family, but let me, let me just...
Are you saying there's three meters?
Three doorbells.
Three doorbells. Now, that doesn't say they're legal.
Nope.
Okay. So I like what's legal.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know about you, but that's what I like.
Let me suggest this.
Because otherwise, somebody has to come back here for a pre-existing non-conforming use or whatever.
Right.
And we're gonna have to hear this case. So in my opinion, if this is only from you looking at things and you estimating, it ain't worth the papers written on.
Except for this. I, I agree with you, but let me practice a little bit.
Legally.
If you indulge. So even if we converted what you, so the yellow are the single families. And as you see, if you exclude our property, there are three yellow lots, all of them law... larger than the ones we have. The remainder of all the land uses in this area, whether they're two or three or commercial, are not single family. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, legally, I, I, there's no argument. We were just trying to show this board what the existing land development pattern is. I think you would agree that single family is not the predominant land use in this area. The other value of this chart, if I can be so bold, that A seven is that to Commissioner Sheldon's question about lot sizes, while they're not measured on this exhibit nor they intended to be so, you can tell by the shaded lots that virtually all of the lots in this immediate area, except for perhaps the other narrow lot sandwiched between the two single-family homes on our side of Portland going towards Belleville Avenue, are all larger than our own, including the properties, Commissioner Sheldon, on both sides of our property. Those two are also larger than ours.
Using this, right? So purple is two-family, right?
Yes.
I'm using the same area that you're using, right?
Right.
There's three, right? Excluding from one that we have, which you didn't highlight that one.
Right.
There's three single families.
Correct.
With this one, that would make it four.
Correct.
So there is four single families here.
Correct.
Correct, right?
Yes.
So when you, when you use the word predominant, right, it's more single than it means two.
Technically.
No.
That's what you said.
I guess what I said was, there are three excluding ours, so for a total of four. But if you look at all the lots on Portland and how they're used, three is in a minority of the land use typology in this area. Right, because you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen lots on this small source section of Portland, and only four of those seventeen are single.
Right, and, and only three are twos.
Well, no, if you take the chairman's point, there are more than two.
Well, then you should've went down and get the records.
Okay.
Three are two-families.
Correct.
And four are single families.
Correct.
And only responding back to...
And then the remainder are larger than...
Those of you who call them multi, but you're not sure what they are.
Correct.
And neither am I, so I'm not, not pretend that I know what they are. I know. But I'm, it's using your, your map here.
Right.
It's saying, at best, three or two families for sure, four are single families.
Correct. I take your logic as it is. Yes.
Yeah, I just...
Moving on to a less controversial exhibit, maybe, maybe.
One counter.
Okay. Exhibit A eight is really straightforward, capturing the images of the site and the surrounding area. A photo number one, I think, is kind of a powerful picture. It shows the current structure, which is in disrepair, and I don't think I need to belabor that, Mr. Cha, really covered the state or condition of this building, both interior and exterior. Clearly, this is not only a building that's in court mission, but the site is in court mission as well. There's no parking provision on-site at all, as Mr. Cha's revised site plan and survey show, the side setbacks are worse than what we are proposing. Photo number two is an aerial photograph. It also showed up in Mr. Cha's exhibit, and it just gives you a sense of the amassing of our existing building with the surrounding buildings, and also gives context for the proposal that is before you this evening for the two-family. Specifically, the two-family is designed to comport with the surrounding properties on either side, both in scale and in use. Photo number three is a picture of the property that the chairman just asked about, saying he knocked on the door. It is a similar residential development, and we use number four just to capture the opposite side. So you have two relatively new construction, both two, at least two-family, and so new that in the, in the first exhibit, it's shown as a vacant lot. So that just gives you a sense of the kind of construction that's happening in this area almost in real time, if you will.
Would you further ask for photo five or photo six?
No. Uh, sorry, yes. With photo five. Just to highlight the, also the way those properties treated on-site parking, very similar to what Mr. Cha designed, designed, excuse me, parking garage and with the two parking spaces immediately in front of the garage. Ours, of course, is slightly to the left, and that's why we seek a waiver if required.
And would you review the relief being sought?
Yes. There is a fair amount of literature that discusses how boards, whether planning boards or zoning boards, approach undersized lot cases. Before I get to that, just a couple of quick things, as Mr. Cha mentioned.
I'm gonna ask you one question.
Yes.
Do you know if the, the subject lot was at one point in time subdivide off of either of the adjoining lots?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer. It's a very good question. I don't know.
All right. Okay. It looked like it fits somewhere else. Okay. Especially since the one on the right, you have the picture that it was a vacant lot.
Right. So just before I get into the undersized lot, literature and case law very quickly to review some of the improvements that were made in the resubmission, and Mr. Cha covered these, but it's a good segue into discussion of undersized lots. The ground floor powder room was removed, the back door removed unless it's required to be put back into our construction drawings. Four parking spaces now provided to meet the demand for parking on-site, and of course, we'll need a waiver for that fourth space. New survey plan better depicts the existing site layout in the context of what's being proposed, showing that we're making an improvement to the site overall. And last but not least, I would submit to this board with a new drainage plan. That's yet another site improvement if this plan were to be approved. As counsel mentioned, I think it's extremely unlikely that, or Mr. Cha mentioned unlikely that this house could be rehabilitated as is. New construction is really the option, and more importantly, I think it's unlikely that a single family would work on the site, both in terms of financing or purchase. In terms of the undersized lot literature, there are a number of cases dealing with this issue, undersized, isolated lots. I'm just gonna go through a couple of the court cases very quickly and then get into what's considered the kind of litmus test for undersized lots. First is Graves, the Bloomfield Planning Board, and in that court case, it was found that often a zoning ordinance contains a grandfather clause relating to such lots, such lots being undersized lots. Such a clause usually provides any parcel of land with an area or with less than that prescribed for a lot in a zone in which the lot is located, may be used as a lot for any purpose permitted in the zone. That's exactly what we have here. The only difference is, it's my understanding that Belleville does not have that grandfather clause. But again, the court understands that although undersized, the lot may be used for the permitted use.
Well, if I may?
Yep.
So you, I'm familiar with Bloomfield a little bit. So what you're saying is...
Oh, Bloomfield, yeah.
Yeah. What you're saying is that if Bloomfield has an undersized lot, right, with a one-family in a two-family zone, oh, right, they will let your grandfather and put a two-family and not a one-family back?
So the, the way that court case reads is that even if, in the instance where you have an undersized lot, the court has found, and this could be a...
But it was a pre-existing two-family?
Correct.
Not a pre-existing one-family?
Correct. But the dictative, yes.
Okay. So that's the grandfather portion?
Correct.
All right, I wanna make sure we're clear on it. I am familiar with Bloomfield a little bit.
Okay.
So the pre-existing has context onto if there was a two-family and you wanted to knock it down and put a new two-family, but it wouldn't comply with the new codes, correct?
I think I follow you.
No, I'm saying if you, in Bloomfield's case.
Right.
I believe it speaks about if there's a two-family, right, and I don't say it burned down.
Right.
And you wanted to put the, the two-family back, but you would not meet present day codes.
I follow you now.
It would be considered undersized.
Correct.
Right? They would let your grandfather back to a two-family.
Correct.
I believe that's the gist of that case.
Right, so Bloomfield, you're right. So Bloomfield dealt with both partial and full destruction and when you're allowed to rebuild, but the dictative that I'm referring to took it a bit further and suggests that when a lot's undersized, as long as you're building a permitted use, barring whether you need marriage, et cetera, that is permitted.
I, I, I don't know if I agree with you, because there's, there's two words that you use that are conflicting. One is grandfather, right? Meaning making reference to the two-family that was there.
Right.
And the other one is permitted use.
I'm just taking the language from the case.
Okay, um, so...
I, I hear what you're saying.
As long as it doesn't require me to agree with you. Okay.
Understood. George is more reasonable than that.
Yes, he is. He, he already knows. I, I give my fair warning.
Yep. The next case, and it's a little progression, and I'll get to the, to the approval in a second, is the Springfield, Burkeby Springfield Lake Board. And in that case, the court found that where owners of an undersized lot in a fully developed area are, were entitled to a variance allowing them to build because holding the owners adjoining fifty lots in a fully developed area built on a more... Failure to do that would actually result in depriving them of the practical economic use without a variance that they'd be entitled to. So in Springfield, it talked about recognizing that in a dense suburban area or urban area where it's fully developed, that there's no opportunity to purchase the properties on either side, which is the case where we are. It's no longer a vacant lot adjacent to ours. We have two fully developed sites that, again, failing, failing to hear the case and consider the variance would be almost tantamount to an economic taking. The last one, before I get into the, to the actual framework for this, is Commonsy Westwood, Westwood zoning board. And there, again, they found that without relief, the property would be zoned into in, in utility. That is to say, without relief for an undersized lot, the property becomes zoned into inutility. You cannot build on the property.
You know, I don't agree with that.
Yes.
What, what did you just say?
Well, well... He's basically saying that if we don't improve this...
No, no, no.
Let me finish this.
Okay. Let him finish.
That, you know, it could be rendered, and I know this is one of his, Mr. Gassion's favorite, you can't make a lot unusable. And I actually agree with him. You can't. I'm not saying that.
The issue here is whether insisting a one-family be put is ma, is making it unusable. That's the issue of this case in front of this board.
Correct.
Why, why would it make it unusable?
Why would it make it unusable?
Yeah.
Because the cost to put up a one-family.
I went to a class in Atlantic City, I was supposed to teach, and they said, finance has nothing to do with this. It's not a hardship.
Except to show that you can't put a one-family there. If you take the cost of the land, the cost of demolition, and the cost of building a new one-family at this location, nobody's doing it. That's the issue. And that, if you, the board doesn't agree with that?
We don't.
Then...
I don't.
Well, you shouldn't, you shouldn't prejudge a case till you...
I'm not prejudging.
You know that.
But you realize, you realize there is an ordinance covering undersized lots.
I understand.
We do have that, I don't know if you know that.
This case, I, I think I framed the case very clearly, very succinctly. That's the issue. And I will obviously sum up and get into a lot of detail to explain why I think it should be approved, and George has not done yet. He's got a lot more to say about it also. And I wish Mr. Vilano would listen.
I am. I always listen. But that's why I, I promote clarity.
Clarity's good.
George, would you continue with...
Yes, yes. So having gotten this far, the, and I never pronounce this court, this court case correctly. Mr. Gassion asked me to practice before it's even, so here it goes, Mr. Gassion. Down near, the Lacy Court Case gave kind of the guidelines for boards such as the Belleville zoning board, and how to deliberate and review site plan applications for undersized lots. Again, permitted use, two reliefs being sought, one for lot coverage, one for side yard setback, but on an undersized lot. And they outlined it as follows. First, the applicant should be required to carry the burden of proof, as in all other cases, as to both the positive and negative criteria. In this case, the positive criteria are the hardship. The hardship is defined by the unique shape, topography, narrowness of the site, which is essentially the undersized lot. We discussed that both in my discussions, the exhibits, and Mr. Cha's discussions. The two requested bulk release, as I mentioned earlier, contemplating their C-one hardship. There will be no substantial negative impact on the surrounding community. In fact, there will only be improvements if this proposal were to be approved. Removal of the eyesore, slightly improved setbacks, as indicated in the revised submission of the survey and site plan. Provision of on-site parking where none currently exist. That on-site parking almost mimicking the on-site parking provision on both sides of our property. And the new drainage plan that we submit makes this site plan a far better condition than what currently exists. Advocate should demonstrate the efforts were made to bring a property into conformity with the zoning ordinance by attempting to sell the non-conformity property to adjacent owners. In this case, we were certainly not able to purchase and sell or purchase, purchase the properties because they're fully developed. Advocate has advised that she did make an offer of her property to the adjacent owners. They were not interested. She bought the property at a bank sale. So it's very similar to Burkeby Springfield case in that sense. Third, the applicant should submit detailed plans of the proposed house, which describe its appearance and prove its compliance with the building codes. That has been submitted to this board by Mr. Cha. The building code review comes later, but as you saw in the renderings and the site plans, efforts were made by the design team to develop a two-family structure that comports with the surrounding land development patterns, and it is a vast improvement over what exists on the site currently. Number four, attempt where applicable to demonstrate compliance with the use, side yard, and setback requirements and location of the house among other homes on tracks similar frontages. This is why Mr. Cha brought up the setback. Mr. Chair is correct. The existing structure probably predates the code, and that's why it's set as forward as it is. But I think Mr. Cha's point was in the context of the Dominaria case, showing that we have now come up with a site plan that comports with the surrounding land pattern in terms of setbacks and side yards. And that's why that aerial photograph is so important, so you can see how the surrounding properties fit on their lots as well. Attempt to demonstrate, fifth and last, attempt to demonstrate that the proposed use does not violate any traditional zoning purposes such as light, air, and open space. Again, I think Mr. Cha delivered that testimony earlier about his design of this building and using the aerial to show the space between the houses, and again, how all the houses on this lot, this section of Portland are developing.
Would you review your ultimate conclusion with regard to this application?
Yes, certainly. Ultimate conclusion, it's a permitted, the code permits two-family homes in this section of Portland Street. There are two reliefs that are sought as part of this application for the permitted use. One is side yard, and the other is lot cover. In the instance of the side yard, it's... In the instance of the side yard, it's actually, represents an improvement over the existing condition. In the lot coverage, we have shown that it is in keeping with the surrounding land development pattern. In both cases, the reason for these bulk and area deviations is squarely due to the undersized lot, isolated, isolated undersized lot case. For all those reasons, and because there's no negative impact on the surrounding area as been shown through the exhibits, what the surrounding area looks like. It's my professional opinion, this board could grant the site plan approval for the development of the two-family home as well as those two reliefs for the bulk and area deviations.
No further questions of Mr. Williams.
Any, uh, questions by members of the board?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Balano.
A variance, and then you're seeking a lot?
Side yard and, uh, lot coverage.
And a size of the lot, right?
Well, I'm sorry, the pre-existing, so under the Cortenzi case, for the pre-existing cases, uh, deviations, we're, we're not looking for deviation for, uh, lot width and size of lots. It's pre-existing. We don't need to, it's pre-existing.
Pre-existing for, on one family?
No, you couldn't change a lot no matter what, right?
Right, so, so you're telling me minimum lot size does not require a variance?
That's, that's my contention, right?
I, I don't know, Frank, Tom?
No, it's a pre-existing, it's a pre-existing variance.
Yeah. We need a pre-existing variance, so what's fair land?
It's an undersized lot.
I think he means it's there and it's not going to get any worse, it is what it is. You know, that's what I think they're saying, in terms of the lot size and the lot width.
Correct.
Whether it's a single family.
The only things that he could, that he's a, he can remove is lot coverage and the side yards.
Correct.
We've always, if the lot doesn't meet the lot size, they've been required to get a variance for lot size.
Isn't the variance because it's a two-family instead of a one-family? If it was a one-family, then it's acceptable.
Two is also permitted.
I think, I think what you're saying, you're talking about the D. Now, the part about the D. This is not a D, this is a C.
Correct.
Yeah, but I think what you're saying is you need for minimum lot area and minimum lot width, you do need a variance, but your argument is that it, it's already there, it's already deficiency. You're not making it worse, and the board should factor that into it.
Well, I don't see why you're not making it worse if you're changing it from one to a two.
Well, just in terms of those dimensions.
Now, I'm just, I guess, I want to hear, I, I agree, I want to make sure we're clear, that I agree with both of you, that you can't change that, I understand that. But I am saying though, that we're not talking about a one here, we're talking about a two. So it's changing. So you are now seeking, in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, thankfully.
But you could be a lawyer, I think.
But, but now that you're seeking a two, I believe the variance comes into play for a lot size.
For a lot size.
It would come into play. We're changing that.
That's my point, they're changing.
They're changing.
I'm not changing, they are, they're changing.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They're changing, once they change it...
If it wasn't for you changing, it wouldn't come into play.
Right. Because existing is existing for the use that's there, not for a different use.
But even on the plans, they admit, Mr. Cha's plans indicate a variance is needed for both minimum lot and the lot width. But, so that's, that's true, but what they're saying
I don't mean it.
Is that, no, I don't think they're saying they don't need it. What they're saying is it's already there, unlike the, the side yard and the coverage. That's changing.
And he only asked for two variances. That's all he asked for. I don't want to put words in your mouth, am I right?
Right, and, and different boards handle it differently. There's a court case that says we're pre-existing conditions.
And if I look up to you, you're, you used to have it, you even have it in there. On August 10th, 28th.
Yes. We're, we're fine either way, because it's, it's still C1, so we're fine.
On this plan, if I'm not reading this wrong, it says it needs a, it needs one, two, three, four, five, six variances.
I can't find it.
But the ones for the parking...
Parking within five feet of a property line.
Maximum lot coverage.
Here's what I have.
Side yard, width, width of the lot, area of the lot, I can't find it.
Here's what I'm, I'm reading from the top. Minimum lot area, 5,000 required, 2484, and a variance is, is needed.
Correct.
Minimum lot width, 50, 25, variance required. Minimum lot depth, it complies, because it's 100 feet. Minimum front yard, they're going, existing at 7.2, which doesn't, but the requirement is 20, and they're complying, it's because they're putting 20.8.
That's correct.
Now rear yard, uh, 20 is the ordinance, they're putting 25, so it complies.
22, correct.
Well, I'm, I'm going by what this says, okay. Minimum side yard each, it requires a minimum of five feet. They're putting three feet, so that needs a variance.
Correct.
Minimum side yards both, because the total should be 14 in our ordinance, and they're only going to have six. Yes, both are better than the previous, but the thing is, it needs a variance.
Correct.
Now maximum lot coverage, that needs a variance also.
And parking.
And parking needs a variance, and parking within five feet of a property line needs a variance. So, did I count wrong?
But parking, it has four spots, now the board only had three.
Yeah, the way of your need for the...
Right, so maybe you might need a waiver.
You need a waiver.
For the wet, for the wet. Well, I, I didn't say that the parking didn't comply. Parking complies according to this. Because you're putting the floor, but you need a way.
They need a way.
But you're still parking within five feet of a property line, and that needs a variance according to this. This is, this is, this is the, um, the zoning summary chart that you have on your, on your form. I'm going by that.
George and I have a difference of opinion. However, however, I have a difference of opinion with Mr. Balano. It doesn't matter whether it's a one or a two. If you need a variance for size of lot, you need the same variance whether it's a one or a two. It's irrelevant whether it's a one or a two. It's a variance for insufficient square footage, insufficient frontage, whatever it may be.
But according to the ordinance we have, we have an ordinance that if you replace the one with another one on a 25 by 100-foot lot, and you comply with all the requirements in that ordinance, you don't even have to come before us. And I have a copy of the ordinance right here.
That's if he had, was replacing the one-family to the one-family.
Well, then if he's knocking it down and replacing with another one-family, you don't have to come here. As long as he complies with the requirements that are in the ordinance. Thank you. I'm glad you have somebody who agrees with you. Has to be destroyed.
Right. Commissioner, I mean...
Can I see what you're reading from?
Oh, sure.
But you have to go back. Because of my confidence, because of my...
If, if we are listing the lot area, lot width as variances, pre-existing non-conformities, it's still a C1 variance, it's a typical hardship, it's impractical, it's not impossible to comply with the code, so we're comfortable either way. I just wanted to share with the board the... That's it.
Oh, any other questions by members of the board while Mr. Gassion is reading?
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question, Connor, I have a question. On the site plan, number one.
Oh, no, that's, that's the report of Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
That's Mr. Harris's report.
Well, are they going to, are they going to...
It says here in this report, and Mr. Harris, we can swear you in, so you can jump in in the meantime. Can we swear, Mr. Harris, in?
Maybe Tom and...
And Mr. Filorato.
Kill everything at one time.
Gentlemen, with regard to this matter, do you swear your testimony to show me the truth?
Yes.
Yes, sir. The board, and for the record, Tom Harris, Board Engineer, Mr. Lorenza, Borough Zoning Board.
Now, Mr. Harris, in your report dated September 25th, 2018, that's your original report, which Mr. Caruso was referring to, on page two, site plan number one, the project includes a seepage pit. However, location of the pit and overflow are not indicated on the plan. So what are we, what is, what's, his question is where's the seepage pit?
I think we submitted a, it's not my area, but a drainage plan in addition to the site plan.
I don't remember saying that, but we, we always take care of that when it comes to building permits.
Yes. Well, you put it in your report, that's why.
Well, since we know...
That's why he asked that.
Yeah.
Okay. Something to refer to.
Do you usually require a grading plan and a, and a drainage plan when it comes to the construction permits?
Thank you. Enlightening, Mr. Gassion?
Uh, no, I, I was familiar with it, I just wanted to add a couple of points.
Okay.
When, after when, I don't want to throw it to you.
All right. I guess that's it. That's it? Any other questions by members of the board?
I have a question too about the seepage pit, so that's sort of been answered. But I want to go back to something Mr. Gassion said a little while ago. He cited as justification for the reason we should grant this project, approve this project, is the cost involved. He said that the cost of acquiring the land and building this made it prohibitive to put up just a single family, that they needed a two-family. Well, first of all, I would have liked to have seen that cost analysis to justify his assertion. But I don't, is that, is that really a justification for us to...
I understand, from the train I, from the course I took in Atlantic City, in which Mr. Gassion was originally listed as one of the, uh, members that was going to give that course, but he didn't go, I was told that, uh, finance is not a hardship. It can't be used as a hardship.
That's not, that's not a change. It's been that way for, for...
Well, that's what you're bringing out.
Profit is not a...
That's a good term.
Hardship.
Okay, right.
But the inability to use the property is a different situation.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If you either fix this house, no matter how much it costs, or if you knock it down and build another one, aren't you using the property? Nobody's saying they can't build anything there. Nobody's saying they can't do it, what's, what's allowed?
You can have your opinion, I don't think anybody's going to put a one-family there. Because it's not going to work.
To fairness and then...
I mean, you could disagree with that.
But, but, Mr. Gassion, if, if somebody overpays for a piece of property, that's not going to come in as justification to build a two or, 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 because technically the cost of acquiring the property plus building is so extravagant that doesn't make sense.
There are certain locations where one families don't work. This is one of those locations.
It's been on one family since that building was built.
Yeah, but the, the land development patterns changed around it, which is what I think Mr. Gassion's getting to. And that's why I cited that court case about being zoned into inutility. So, the word profit, I think, is spot on, right? So it's not only about the profit, which is what you studied in Atlantic City, it's about the inutility, if you can't use your property, if building a single-family residence is impractical or impossible, you're, you're losing the value of your property. And that is a hardship that's permissible under the undersized lot isolated cases.
I'm not saying they're not going to make, they should make more money. I'm saying that no one's going to use this property for a one-family. That's what I'm saying. The circumstances are such, the way it's developed, nobody's spending the money to put a new one-family on this lot. And I, obviously I want to sum up when everybody's done. But that's my point, I think it never happens. You're letting this go to inutility, your town's going to be stuck condemning this property and wind up with the property. And I don't think that's in the best interest for the municipality at all.
Now, let me ask you a question then, since you said that. Let's say that happens, and the town auctions off the property. And it, and it ends up, a guy buys it and says, "I'll put a one-family there because I'm getting it for a cheap price." Why wouldn't he?
I can't answer that.
I can't either. And my, my point is that's not what I'm trying to add.
No, I'm not saying that. I didn't want to bring it up, I didn't bring it up in this situation.
No, I would say, because I, to your point, because you've submitted a lot of evidence, okay? In my opinion, I don't agree with your premise that you cannot build a one-family.
And, and I respect that. I, I think...
I could give you other addresses within Belville, which you are probably part of the cases where, uh, we built, uh, an undersized lot, and they've been sold, and then it, I'm not going to tell you many details.
It's a unique location, Mr. Balano.
Well, Mr., Mr. Gassion...
Nan Oak Street, big house on the other side.
Respect your opinion, just like you respect me.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Gassion?
Yes.
What section of town would you say has the highest density? Would you say Silver Lake? They're all next to each other, these houses, they're all on top of each other.
I would speculate you're right, I mean, there's certainly some...
On Heckle Street, on Heckle Street, there's currently a one-family being built on a 25 by 100-foot lot, who originally came here for the same thing, try and make a two-family, but they're building the one.
Silver Lake is not this section.
Well, I said it's a different section.
I'm going to watch how I say things. But it's a big difference.
But there's, it's a high density there.
Silver Lake is, Silver Lake is over the port of... It's mixed uses, it's got a cross-section.
But this application is very much like one we recently heard, that was 164 Mill Street. The owner there wanted, wanted to tear down an existing one-family, put a two-family on an undersized lot. We, we said, when I was, when I tried to make a site visit to that home, just like these pictures indicate, when I walked into the front porch of that home, I literally fell through the floor. But the owner went through the process of renovating that house, and now, and now it's absolutely shell-diced.
Oh, yeah, so I agree.
And again...
And that was a bigger lot, and that was in an RC zone, Mr. Gassion.
Mill Street is not cortland, is directly a cross-street from the park, it's a different world. A different world. And we all know that, we're familiar with Belville.
Just one other comment, the applicant already owns the property, so the only additional expense now would be the cost of tearing down, putting up a new building. It's not that the applicant has to purchase this property and put up a building, they already own it.
To be fair, she did purchase it.
She did purchase it.
In, in the, uh...
When you take the entire picture, the numbers won't work, and I don't think anybody's building a one-family. Her or anybody.
We disagree there.
Yeah, but let me, my summation, we're done.
Commissioner Sheldon, just so, to use Mr. Balano's, uh, words, that we're on the same page.
Balano, Balano.
I'm sorry, he got me started with that, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sheldon, just so we're clear, the issue of use is not truly before this board. In other words, it is a permitted use. So we're not asking for, the chairman asked, mentioned a D variance. We're not looking for a D variance to build something that's not permitted. The two-family, I'm not sure about the other fact pattern you referred to, but in this case, it is a permitted use, so I just want to make sure that's clear about that.
The other thing is, coincidentally, the ordinance that the chairman has says it could be a 25-foot lot, if you had a two-family on it, you can rebuild a two-family, not just a one-family.
And that's what I said about Bloomfield's.
But you don't have a two-family, you have a one.
The point is, the ordinance would allow you to build a two-family on a 25-foot lot. That's the point.
Correct, you're, you're right. You're right. That's, that's what Bloomfield's point is, that you've got to slip by.
Any other questions of my plan?
I, I have, uh, you're asking us to take on faith, you're asking the board to take on faith that a single-family could not be. If a single-family were approved here, it would not be built, or couldn't be built. Wouldn't it have been helpful to give us some...
Yes, to bring a realtor in? Absolutely.
I, I thought we would accept George's testimony.
George said, "Let's get a realtor."
It's up to the board, I, I don't think we've heard enough. Are we having anything other than observations, and they may be accurate, about nothing could be built here?
Listen, you guys can do whatever you want. I, I'm, I'm always, to Mr. Gassion's point, I, I, as much of a hard time I give him and to George, but I'm, whether you have a realtor or not, I want to give him a hard time too. Because I'm going to challenge their data that anybody puts in, because people cherry pick data. I can bring in a report tomorrow, because I'm a realtor.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. What Mr. Gassion said here, it says here if there was a one, or was a two. What I'm reading here, an ordinance amending Belville zoning ordinance, chapter 23, and establishing special regulations for new one-family dwellings to be constructed on existing isolated non-conforming 25 by 100-foot lots to be constructed on in residential districts, all residential districts. That it mentions here, it mentions no matter which district it is, it's for constructing one-family dwell. It doesn't say two.
If you read on, it says if a two-family was destroyed, you could replace it.
I believe that.
Towards the end.
I'm looking at the last...
It doesn't change this case, I just...
Well, we're, we're, we're skewing from this case.
And, and we're not certain.
Mr. Williams, we're not certain, I don't think, that the homes immediately adjacent to the subject property are two-family or multifamily.
They're legal two-families.
Correct.
They're legal two-families.
Two-families on both sides.
Well, actually, I think he said the one on the left is a one.
It's a one. It's a two?
The one on the right, right is a two. The one on the left, he said it's a one. This is a two?
They're both legal two.
According to the double property tax database, both of them are two.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Well, let him sum up. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Well, no, actually, actually, do you have any more witnesses?
I do not.
Okay. Does any members of the public have questions of this witness based upon testimony given? Mr. Frantantoni, come on up, give your name and address. And, yes, I know that. He's your question.
Mr. Frantantoni, 129 Mount Prospect, Belville. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes. As a first wife in here, how many bedrooms did you afford?
That was testimony offered by the architect.
Two.
That's two.
As a good, practical planner, concerned about the good community.
Okay.
Do you think triple-stack parking is practical? Especially on a busy street like Portland Street?
I think it's a good question, and we didn't touch on that. It's a good question because the design team's effort was to consider the trade-offs. Given that Cortland Street is a busy street, the design team's decision was to figure out a way creatively where we could keep all the cars that are required by code to be onsite, onsite, as opposed to asking for a variance for fewer onsite parking spaces and taking a risk that may be attended parts on a street. So, again, from a planning perspective, it was a traditional trade-off scenario, looking at, do the benefits outweigh the detriments of doing what we did here versus perhaps contributing to congestion on Cortland Street, rights versus these rules.
So basically, you're saying it was a trade-off, not good planning?
In this, in the context of the municipal land use law, it was good planning because we considered a trade-off.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Any other members of the public? No? Any members of the public have testimony to give on this application? Mr. Frantantoni, come right back up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, my point, I, the board, some of the board members brought up are existing ordinance about 25-foot lots.
Right.
I think it's practical. And there's a lot of controversy when the board approved that. But you got a one-family, we'll allow you to build a one-family. Because one-family requires 40 by 100. But in this case, you're asking for a two-family, which requires 50 by 100. You don't even have it big enough for one-family. Cortland Street, as he agrees with me, is a very busy street. The garage parking, stacking two in the garage and one in back with it, it's extremely... If the guy, the first guy in the garage, and he gets called to work at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, what does he do, wake up the other people to back out those other two cars to get his car out? It is not practical. In addition, I've been in some of his houses, so I don't want to give the people's names, but some of these stack parking, where you allow parking in a garage and one in front of it, sounds good at these meetings. When we go to these houses, the garage has lawn hores and lawn furniture, and then other things, and pine signals, and snow blowers, and all. So those cars never park there. Cortland Street is a disaster. I recently sold a house I own on Bayard Street, which is right off of Cortland Street. And we used to get all the people from Cortland Street parking on Bayard Street, because there's virtually no parking there. It's a disaster down there to begin with. So hopefully, if they want to build a one-family, I think that's gracious enough for the town to create the ordinance that allows them to replace that one-family. I don't see a two-family being built there.
Any other member of the public wish to give testimony? Do you wish to cross-examine Mr. Frantantoni?
I do not.
Okay, then you may sum up.
I'd just, I'd just form at one statement, just to correct the record. There was drainage drawing and some calculations submitted with the application. Going from my comment, it did not show the location of the seepage pit on the plan.
You may... You have a question?
My client has something to say.
Okay.
Did you raise your hand, please? Or did you testify?
She testified just months ago.
Ms. Bergos, right? Okay. You are still under oath. Just for the record, state your name and display your last name.
Who had a comment about the drainage, I believe?
Not at all. I wanted to pretty much cross-examine what he said before about the one-family versus the two-family. All I pretty much want to do is to match the appearance of what we already have there. When I originally purchased this lot, I was under the impression that the vacant lot next to me, because it was vacant, belonged to me. But it was not. Just like...
You're talking about when you purchased the building?
Yes. It was just...
The other house was not there, am I correct?
It was not there.
And your assumption was, you owned that too?
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
No misinterpretations.
Okay, so I was actually taking also. At the end of the day, there are twins exactly like that being built. Way bigger than what I'm trying to build. Right? And there is four houses being built. Okay? New. One in the back, the one next to me, the one on the right, the one on the left, and there's another one. I forget what's the new, that street on the south, that's been built, as we speak. All I'm trying to do is to build a house just as equal as the parallel house, the street that's there. I don't know if it's...
You're talking about undersized lots?
I'm not talking about the size of my lot. I'm just...
No, I'm not talking about your lot. I'm talking about you saying houses were built on undersized lots.
I'm talking about the lots around my area, they're way bigger than mine. They are.
Way bigger, okay.
They're way bigger. But that's my lot, it's unique. The reason why my lot is unique, because all that area around there was subdivided. And that house was already there. It was pretty system by itself, and it's been vacant for years.
Now, are you saying that possibly the lots flanking your lot could have been subdivided from your lot?
They are already...
Well, then, if they were subdivided from your lot, then your lot caused its own hardship. It's a self hardship.
I don't think he knows.
I will...
Well, Mr. Gashion, I'm just going by what you're saying. I'm not saying anything wrong.
What I'm saying is, when I bought this house, this house was already there. It's been there since 1967 or something. So these lots were vacant all around me. And then they started...
Man, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just a simple one. Whenever I buy a property, I do a search. And I have a guy, a surveyor, come over. Apparently, you didn't do any of this.
We did. We did. It was very simple.
How did you think the lot next door was yours?
Okay, first of all, it was like a, by the time we got into the whole closing thing, and we find out that that, I was thinking, oh, we can build a bigger house, we can make a parking there. That house was already, the lot was already under contract with something else. And it was just a big to-do.
But it wasn't by the same owner?
No. No. It was, this house is owned by the bank, and it was vacant for years. So, that's...
I understand.
So at the end of the day, I'm stuck with a property that I didn't intend to. I don't know what to do with it. And all I'm asking is to build a two-family house so that, you know, I can actually kind of break even and rent it. I'm not trying to sell it. I'm not trying to do anything. Whether it's a hardship, because, you know, it makes more sense financially to build one or two. We're not going into that. But at the end of the day, all I'm trying to do is to match with the appearance of what's already there. As you can see, we're trying to do it so that it will all do like a nice community. That's all we're trying to do. I'm not trying to benefit from anything or do anything illegal. You know, I was just looking at the more sense of how we can, you know, make this into something that I can, you know, eventually pay itself and pay my own bills. That's pretty much, I don't need to help myself.
Okay, if I sum up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may sum up. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think it's important that you look at this photograph. I think this tells a big story. This is a building that has been abandoned for five years. It sits between two relatively new two-family dwellings. You look at the bottom photograph, you can see that it sits in the setback area, that it's small, and that if anybody were to think of putting a one-family in between there, they'd be so dwarfed, it would never happen. Look at it. You're going to put a one-family in between there? Not going to happen. Nobody's doing it. Take a look at those photographs.
We have those.
We have those. Everybody's got a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We all have copies.
This is the basement of the existing dwelling. You can see by looking at it, it's a disaster. Been vacant for five years. It's not rehabitable. It's going to be demolished, and a new building has to be put up. Again, do you think somebody's going to squeeze a one-family between those two large two-families? Again, not going to happen. This is a rendering of what could be there. Fits in perfectly, looks good, a benefit to the community. An aesthetically pleasing piece of property. Unlike what is in existence, unlike what's going to happen if there is no approval. Mr. Chairman, I'd appreciate if you look in this direction?
No, I looked at this thoroughly.
Okay, thank you.
I've looked at this right along. You don't have to worry about that.
This building is an eyesore. It's been vacant for five years. It's not rehabitable. The architect has made that clear. I think the pictures make that clear. There's no land available on either side. There are similar two-families on either side. If you approve this, you're removing some existing violations from this old unrehabitable structure. It's got a bigger side yard violation. It's got a front yard violation. You would have a tremendous aesthetic improvement. They have no parking on the current lot. No parking. None. Zero. We're providing, although it's tandem, and I understand that's a compromise, but it's a heck of a better than no parking. We're compliant. It would have a positive impact on the surrounding area as opposed to what you have there. Mr. Valano disagrees with me. This is a two-family zone. This use is permitted. Yes, both variances are required. Be it area, or side yard, or percentage of lot coverage. They're required. But this is consistent with the use. This is not a D-application. There's no special reasons necessary. It's a C1, C2 application. Hardship of the property, benefits outweigh the detriment. The Kaufman case said, concentrate on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improving the zoning that will benefit the community. That will benefit the community. Dahlheimer versus Lacy. Happened to be Judge Serpentelli, a Belville boy who made this decision. He cautioned boards to be conscientious in its review of the facts since outright denial may amount to confiscation, thereby requiring condemnation by the municipality. This is an isolated lot case. Commons versus Westwood. Underlying the request for a hardship variance is the premise that without such relief, the property may well be zoned into inutility. Burke versus Spring Lake. Where the owners of an adjacent lot, 50 feet, had built on that lot. They had another 50-foot lot. The zoning was changed to require much more square footage. The board decided, and the court decided, they were allowed to put the building up on that 50-foot lot in Spring Lake despite the substantial change in the requirement. The fact that other landowners in the area had non-conforming uses, as is clearly the case in this area, is a circumstance to consider when determining if the variance will be a substantial impairment, the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Certainly, this case will not be a substantial impairment of anything if it's exactly with the houses on either side. Again, it's a permitted use. We have zero objectors. Yes, Mr. Frantantoni objects. Mr. Frantantoni does not live in the neighborhood. You don't have one neighbor here saying they don't want this house. I'm sure they'll be only too happy to see that monstrosity disappear and a new home be put in its place. You're making the lot viable. And when we're talking about cost, I'm not talking about profit. I'm talking about the fact that nothing's going to be built there because the cost of the land, the cost of the demolition, and the cost of a new home won't fit in that cavern between those two two-families. It doesn't fit. Nobody's putting a one-family there. Obviously, we need a waiver for the fourth parking spot. That's not the issue. If the board sees fit to grant this application, I'm sure you'll do that. The side yard is an improvement over the existing. The front yard's an improvement over the existing. Everything about this is an improvement over the existing. You're betting on somebody coming along and building a new one-family. It's not happening. If you have confidence in what I do, and I think you know I try to tell exactly what I think, I can't see somebody putting a new one-family. That's my opinion. So I think you're left with allowing this building that fits the circumstances, fits this lot, aesthetically pleasing, or leaving this monstrosity here. For the town to maybe have to condemn the property. I know the board's given this a lot of thought. I understand there's some thoughts that are negative about this. I think, if you take a good look at that picture, that picture right there, and say, "Who's going to squeeze a one-family in there?" No one. You take a good look at this picture. There it is. Bingo. It fits. Somebody's going to want to buy that. Somebody's going to want to live there. Hey, thank you, board, for your time and attention.
Mr. Gashion, can I ask you a question?
I thought I answered them all.
Well, no, because you brought up these cases. On the case where there was, I think, what was it, 50 by...
Dahlheimer? Which one?
The one that was 50 by 100, but there was one...
The Spring Lake case.
They were two separate lots, am I correct?
They were.
Okay. And then they increased the lot size that was necessary to build it.
Correct.
What was the, was the building of each?
I don't understand.
Were they one, two, three, what? Were there one-family built? Were there two-family built? What was built there?
I think it was a one-family zone. I'm quite sure it was a one-family zone.
So it was one-family's built.
So a one-family was built.
So you're talking about confiscation. As long as you're allowed to build, there's no confiscation. So you're playing with words here.
Obviously, I had to make my point. The fact that you're allowed to build a two-family, that's what somebody might want to build.
No, it's not that you're allowed to build a two-family. It's a two-family zone. Both two-family and one-families are both allowed in a two-family zone. If you go to an RC zone, which is multifamily, you can build a one, you can build a two, or you can build three or more. That is the zone. That is the zone. You're not going to tell me that in the ordinance, it doesn't say you can build a one and a two.
Mr. Gashion, you're correct. Mr. Gashion, you're correct. Your job is to make a decision with regard to this case. You don't agree with me, that's fine. I think you're incorrect.
I'm going by the way you worded.
Debate me, I think you're wrong. I think that this is a good application. I think the pictures tell the tale. Period. 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 Look at it.
Look at the picture.
All right, let's go by the picture. I'm gonna go by this picture. You wanna go by a picture? I'm gonna go by this picture. We have a two-family next door, okay? You could put two cars in, one in each garage, and two cars in front of each garage. Here, you have to put two cars in the garage and one car outside the garage. They're tandem. Neither the one on the left or the one on the right are tandems. It's a perfect example, because those lots are bigger. And you could have a two-family with no problem.
This lot is what this lot is.
Well, then you have to deal with what this lot is.
Neither of them are parking cars in front of the door.
On the one on the right, you have a stairway and still two parking spaces on the right.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. And the one on the left,
A car in front of their door.
You have a car in front of the garage. It's only one car, but that garage you could clearly see is a two-car garage. Okay, let's just take a look at it, all right? What fits this or this? What's better? What's better? I agree to shortcomings with this application.
Guess what? I'll tell you why. The top is better as a one-family. The top is better, because if you have the top as a one-family, you don't need tandem parking in the garage. You don't need to park a car in front of the entrance.
I don't disagree with that.
Oh, okay.
That's assuming somebody would put a one-family there.
You're assuming they may. Nah, I'm assuming they may. People build on lots.
You're the decision maker. I made my arguments. You make your decision. I can't do anything more. I've made as strong an argument as I could possibly make. I went over every aspect of it. You wanna debate me about it? I disagree with you. But you make the decision.
I'm saying, we've had cases involving you, involving you, where a person came on an undersized lot and wanted to build a one-family.
I'm sure there has been, but every case stands on its own.
Yes, I agree with you there.
I'm pointing out where this is. A narrow street in the valley section of town surrounded by two big two-families and some other multifamilies in the area.
Believe me, if they built a one-family that looks nice like the two adjacent properties, I think it would go. Now, would it go for the price the person may want? That's another story.
Will it go for the price that it costs to do it? That's the only question, and I don't think it will.
And I think one of our members even said about the one, which was not your case, I'm gonna give you credit, on Mill Street, where it was over, RC zone, which allows a two-family, yet they wanted to knock down a one and put a two in its place, and Mr. Shelton's foot went through the front porch, and yet, they've remodeled it, and it looks gorgeous.
I don't disagree that Mill Street is more easily saleable than this location on Cortlandt Street, and you know that, and everybody on the board knows that. Anybody familiar with the town knows that. Mill Street's a much more desirable location. You're right across the street from France Park and Cherry Blossoms.
It's not that desirable. It's a block away from Newark, so it's not that desirable.
You wanna compare that, this Cortlandt Street location with that?
Well, I, that was a bigger lot, though, too. All right. Let's, will your money get to this now?
One other question. Mr. Gashion, when your client purchased this property, I've been staring at these pictures of the basement for the last hour. When your client purchased this property, was that hole in the basement already present?
I don't know. I don't know.
May I answer?
Sure, sure.
It was. The hole was there. Well, I put the property, you know, kind of sort of without seeing it, but but the hole was there, and I took, I, sorry. I'm already there, making my own decision.
Come on, come on. Nobody's gonna stop you. I'm not a judge that he says you have to be on there. You can come on forward.
So, I took there a, maybe somebody, you know, he went there, he gave me an estimate, he says, "Oh, yeah, we can, you know, patch it up and fix it." And I was okay with it, but then when I went back in with an inspector, they were like, "You can't fix this." Like, you know, I got different estimates to kind of, "How are we gonna go about fixing that?" They were like, "You can't fix this." And the amount of, again, money and time that's gonna get into it, and the insurance, like a contractor will go in there, and they gotta put their insurance and all that stuff, and make sure that they, you know, opt code, they can do it. Because that part where the hole is, it was actually like an extension of the kitchen. I don't know if that was legal or not, but that was already, it wasn't from the house. It was like with bricks that they did it themselves.
I'm just trying to figure out how our code department could have allowed this house to be sold as is with just such a gaping hole.
They don't have a choice.
They're going to have to foreclose it.
It's a back sale.
That was living, I think.
They're going to have to foreclose it.
That was a transaction between a willing buyer and a willing seller. That was probably foreclosed by the bank, and my client then went to the bank. There was no CEO or anything like that involved in this transaction, I'm sure. I did not handle it.
Do you have any idea how this hole, they have been made?
There was, there's nothing in this property. Can I just say, there is no pipes, there is nothing. Everything was stolen. My understanding is that the neighbors would have to call the police many times because people were like getting to the property, the siding, the metals, everything is gone.
Obviously, it's speculation might part, but it almost looks like it was, the hole is large enough that someone may have taken out an oil tank or something that was in the basement.
You can't, because it's very narrow. I mean-
Well, you could speculate. It all may be some vein where he was living there, but I mean, that's not gonna, that's not relevant to the case.
Or it could have been one heck of a raccoon that-
No raccoon.
-made this hole.
I think it was a raccoon.
You mentioned, Mr. Gashion, earlier that there's no land to be acquired, obviously, to make this lot better. Let me ask the flip side. Did anyone approach either of the neighbors?
I think-
I did.
Did you approach either of the neighbors to see if they were interested in? One of them, or both of them buying this property and splitting it down the middle?
Yes. I did. Well, the one on the left was already built, and the one on the right, the right, with Mr. Raj, he was building. He told me I owed a price and-
But since they've been up, have you approached either of them, either of your neighbors, to see if they're interested in acquiring either your entire lot or splitting your lot down the middle, one goes to one, one goes to the other, and they pay you for it?
I asked Mr. Raj.
Only the one on the right?
Only the one on the right.
And that was when, roughly?
We're in contact all the time.
Okay, he's not interested?
He's not interested, no. He actually owns the one on the right, the one on the back, and the one on the other street. And he's the one-
He owns most of the properties around there.
Yeah.
And he doesn't, he's not interested in yours. Good.
That's the end of that, then?
I can't vote.
You can't vote. Because he wasn't here the last time, two months ago.
Okay, six eligible, and four votes would be needed to carry the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, four. Four, five, six. He needs four, more than six. Word discussion.
I just got one last comment, if I could. Not one neighbor is here.
Mr. Gashion, you already said that. You already summed up. How many times are you gonna repeat yourself?
Well, because it went on. I'd like to leave something fresh in your mind.
Let him finish his comment.
Let me know when you're done.
I'll be very quick.
Finally done.
One, not, well, there's been follow-up questions. Not one neighbor is here, and if you were in either of these houses on either side, do you think you would want this to stay, or do you wanna see that moved? That's it. I'm done.
Good. Now, discussion, gentlemen.
Listen, I've been all over the record, so I would encourage my colleagues to have a discussion. According to Mr. Gashion, I spoke too much later.
I didn't get it. I'm sorry if I'm like that.
I said, "According to," I spoke too much.
Please, don't get him to keep on talking, please.
Yeah. I offered to my colleagues. I mean, I think I put all my concerns fairly, which I like to do, on the record, so Mr. Gashion can yell at me and debate me, and that's what this forum is for, you know? We don't have to agree. You know, I learned a lot over the years listening to his audience. I don't always agree. The planner does a great job. Don't always agree. I, my opinion, it's not something that I see myself clearly on supporting this application. I said that for multiple reasons, and I don't buy into the premise that will make it unbuildable. I think if you put, you know, I want to comment that Mr. Gashion, I definitely don't agree with it, because you all see the size of the one families that are being built now. They're pretty substantial. So, you can build a one-family that'll be, that'll fit in with that body style construction. Now, you know, is, I don't think it's unusable, personally, but I cannot speak to the cost, because I didn't do any of the research and all in respect. I'm not saying Mr. Gashion's wrong, but I'm asked to come up with my opinion on what I know, okay? I've been wrong before. I'm not gonna tell you I wasn't, but I don't think it's unbuildable for another one-family that you can match the body, the style of a home there, and a nice one. That's my opinion. And to fan this to Mr. Gashion, doesn't mean I'm right. Me and him differ on a lot of things. Sometimes I'm right, and sometimes he's wrong.
Agreed.
Right, but, and I warned Mr. Williams, and I'm not gonna agree with him on a lot of things. That's why I challenged the Bullfield, the Bullfield comments that he made about. And because to me, that leads back to what the Belville ordinance says, you know? And I agree with Mr. Williams in the sense that if there was a two there, and it burnt down or whatever, or this or that, you know, I might not like it, that putting a two back there, but if there was one there, then somebody before me made that decision. I didn't make that decision. This decision is our decision, and that's my issue. So, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. That's where I come from. And so, I approach my peers, and that's why I debate with Mr. Gashion out loud on the record, so he can, on the fly, you know, address my concerns. And a lot of times, I'll be fair, he has changed my mind. I don't like to admit it, but he has.
Boy, he's very persuasive at times.
Well, he's good at his job.
Yes, he is. I will always say that he's a great attorney.
And I'm not-
I don't always agree with him at times, but I would say he's a great attorney.
That's my two cents. I encourage my peers to debate the issue.
All right. This is the first case, first case ever that I have ever heard that says, "If you are allowed to build something, but not what I want, that you're confiscating my property." I've never heard that ever.
I really, personally, I know Mr. Gashion long enough. I don't think he's trying to say that exact language.
Well, that was the language.
But what he's implying is that. I agree. He's implying. But I think when we differ is, and I believe, and I said earlier, I think you will put a substantial one-family there height-wise, the whole-
Oh, yeah, because three stories.
Right, and it'll make a nice looking home. My opinion.
And it would blend right in with the house next door.
That's mine.
I agree with you a thousand percent there.
Now, is he right that a two is permitted? Yes. I can't argue that, but it's telling you, I can't see my way clear of a lot of it.
I just think it's putting too much on that sized lot. That's all I'm saying.
I haven't heard from my peers, so.
And also, the cases he always brought up, all his cases where there was one families involved. Okay. Yes, I, I'll go to Mr., we can go this way. I'll go to Mr. Shel.
Well, I largely concur with Mr. Valano. I don't accept the argument that only the two families is economically feasible here. I think that this property by its nature deserves a one-family home. You could have a really nice one-family replacement home for this area. I mean, in the absence of any proof indicating why financially a one-family can't be built here, I can't support the two-family.
And technically, the valley has been getting nicer. Just the two homes that flank this, you know, they look really gorgeous, and, you know, so really, I think that the valley is rejuvenating.
I can't either. I cannot agree with the fact that you cannot economically put a one-single-family home in this lot. The only thing that I could see possibly is instead of what they're proposing is, and it's gonna turn it from a one into a two legally, is possibly putting a one-family with what would be a studio apartment behind the garage, which I know then would turn it into a two, but something beyond that, a two-family, I just, it's the same argument. I can't, because I could definitely steal one in here. And so, I don't think I could support it either.
Mr. Jardella? I just have a problem with all the parking. It's kind of tough to fit all those cars in that one spot.
The three tandem parking, it's just a matter of practicality. It's just not gonna work. It may look good in theory on paper, but-
Well, I think regarding the tandem parking, I just want to bring everyone's attention. You know, if you had a one with tandem parking, you're dealing with people in the same household. You could potentially be dealing with a guy on the second floor to move his car out of the garage. So, you-
You have to be.
That's what I'm saying. So, I don't see-
Different families.
That's my issue. One family, wait, and all I'm saying, with one family, you're going to the next room to wait whoever's in the garage.
And he grabbed the keys by the door, and he can go move a car.
Right, but you're gonna go to your neighbor now. To me, it doesn't make sense.
Somebody, I have a motion.
Do you want motion to deny, or?
Well, since he's mostly saying negative things.
I want to say something first for the record, and the motion would be, from what I'm sensing, the motion would be to deny. But I just want to say on the record that, you know, there have been a lot of court cases cited. There have been a lot of court cases cited during the hearing. I'm well aware of the fact that these isolated single-family lots, to me, causes more of a problem than a larger development because of the nature of what we're dealing with. What the law basically says when we cut through it all is that if something can be reasonably constructed on an undersized lot, a board really needs to consider that heavily because you can't say no to everything, unless the lot was five feet wide and 10 feet deep. But for a viable lot, and this is viable for something, we are really under an obligation to allow a reasonable use of the property. What this board has said is that they don't feel that what's being proposed is reasonable or doable on this lot. The sense is, it's just a little too much, too much for the lot. So, I want the record, and from also what I've heard, more than one board member say that a nice single-family home, a single-family dwelling of reasonable size is workable on this lot, in their opinion, from an approval standpoint. I don't want the record to indicate that this board is saying in any way, shape, or form, "We don't want anything on this lot." I think what the board is sensing is,
What else?
This application is a little too much, but they would certainly be open to a, to a single-family, nicely constructed, single-family house on this lot. I want that on the record, and I want that clear. If I'm wrong, tell me that that's what I've heard.
No, you're right there, but my question, my question to you is-
That's all I'm gonna say. You're right.
Wait, you're right, but what I'm saying is-
You know, the other thing is, real quick, is the fact that if you put three cars at tandem on a road that's very narrow with a lot of cars going through there, to be pulling it out and those cars, I just, I just don't see that.
The only reason I was saying this to you is because I have no problem with a one. And what I'm saying to you is also, based upon the ordinance that we have, if they weren't-
It might be that they-
If they wanted to demolish it, and they meet the requirements of the ordinance with side yard, this, that, and the other thing, they don't even have to come back and forth.
That would be Frank's initial call.
Yes, yes. That would be Frank's call if it meets that ordinance.
All right, that's all I wanted to say.
Yes.
So, if the board's done discussing, I haven't heard any affirmative yet, so the motion would be, with a second, to deny the application for the reasons indicated, and that's it. We don't get any conditions.
No, it's not. There is no condition, there is no approval.
If someone wants to-
But I just need somebody to make a motion.
And if yes is a motion, is if no is a no?
A yes is a no.